Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight's Monday, September 18th, 2017. The time is 7:01 PM. We do have a regular business meeting tonight. We'll have readings of first, second, and third ordinances. But first, what we'll do is several agenda items, the first of which is establishing the quorum. With all members of council present tonight, we do have that quorum. Second item is disposition of minutes, and this is for the regular session held September 5th, 2017. Do I have a motion for approval of these minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval of the minutes of September 5th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes have been approved. We now have communications. I do have one item to report, that Student Senate has arranged a meeting with council members, and that will be in Baker Center on September 29th from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. Councilmember Foll.
Thank you. I want to remind people that this Thursday, we're kicking off our comprehensive plan extravaganza. Steve's excited, just like me. We're having our vision, and one of our first visioning meetings, which will be 6:30 in the community center. So bring your friends. This is a very interactive, public participation sort of event, and it doesn't really fly if people don't go. So, everybody's welcome. Thank you.
Other council members? Are there any other communications? We'll have reports and communications from other elected officials, Law Director Eliason? Okay. And Auditor Hecht, I don't believe is here, so. Mayor Patterson.
I have a few things to apprise everybody of. There was a news release that I received from Gary Chancy, who is the Public Relations official or officer for the Wayne National Forest down here in Athens. And he sent out a Wayne National Forest invites comments on the Buckeye Trail/North Country Trail reroutes in Perry County. But this also does, as I've read through this, include areas that are a little closer in Shawnee and New Straitsville in Perry County, so kind of on the R end of Perry County. So if anybody would like to comment on this project, they can reach out to Gary Chancy at the Wayne National Forest on that. We also received notification that Jesse Schmetzer, who is the Athens Mobility Coordinator, that they received a grant to fund for six months, a locally contracted planning grant, or use a locally coordinating planning grant, which will allow them to hire a mobility specialist to, again, continue to look at our transit throughout our region.
Mayor, Jesse happens to be in the audience.
Is Jesse here?
Yeah.
Oh, Jesse.
Thank you.
That's big news.
Yes, exciting.
Okay. I am too. Two last items. One is that we have been working with Scott Thompson here at the Government Channel in making sure that we can more timely push out when different meters are being bagged in the uptown area for a sundry of different reasons, whether it's an event at Ma'Ad or some contractor that's doing work somewhere in the uptown area. And so Scott has put together something on the website where we can, under the parking division, where we'll be able to push out information with a much higher frequency and to which there are meters that are being bagged in the uptown area, which we often hear, I didn't realize that meters were being bagged in a certain area on a certain street, and being sympathetic to those concerns, we hope that this is one step in the right direction to make sure we can get information out in a more timely manner. And finally, I attended a great event today down at the Athens post for the State Highway Patrol, where they dedicated the post itself. This is interesting. I'll share a little bit of history real briefly, and that is that in 2005, the State Highway Patrol changed the way they name barracks or posts, where it used to be someone who had retired and was deceased. They no longer do that, that someone can be alive and well, and have the post dedicated after them. So therefore, our post down here in Athens has been renamed, or named, the John Bourne Athens Ohio State Highway Department post. So it was a great event. The Speaker of the House for the Ohio House, as well as the President of the Senate, were both there to present and work with us, as was Director Bourne. So it was quite a moving and interesting event to see that. And Director Bourne is from Athens.
Yeah.
Great.
That's all I have.
Okay. And one more communication. I'd just like to welcome Professor Sodis's journalism class tonight. We have students here. Thank you very much. You always ask great questions at the end of the meeting, and so that's part of what we're here for, so we'll welcome the comments and questions afterwards. And we'll do the readings for the ordinances. The ordinance for third reading that comes up tonight is 9517, and this is an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 28th and 29th, 2017, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens on Halloween weekend. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, President Nisley. I move to adopt 9517.
Second.
This is our final ordinance in terms of all of the Halloween ordinances that we have to do, and it's the final reading, so we can move on and have a safe and happy Halloween.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval. Are there any other comments or questions from council members? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. There's an ordinance for second reading, 10517, and ordinance amending the 2017 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend the rules for 10517.
Second.
The reason for suspension is there's some urgency to get the bill paid for the equipment that needed to be replaced at Fire Station Number One, that was destroyed by a lightning strike some time ago. The bill was due in August. We're now into September.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 10517.
Second.
Again, for the reasons stated just a moment ago, and when it was read for the first time two weeks ago, this is an appropriation of various funds for police, for the general fund, fire, and also, I'm looking for it right here, Special Improvement District.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 10517. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 10617 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for sign replacement on U.S. Routes 33, 50, and State Route 682, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinances for first reading. 10717 is an ordinance authorizing design engineering of the Richland pedestrian improvements. This is Project 311, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Tonight, we're reading for the first time, "Our Authorizing Design and Engineering for the Richland Pedestrian Improvements." Council should have received the Buckley Group Engineering Report. That is a very comprehensive report that discusses all aspects of that area. And for our audience, basically, we're talking at the crossing that occurs between where Porter Hall is and going across to the other side, and that corridor there from where the buses stop up to the bridge, basically, and we're looking at enhancements. We've also been awarded, if I get this right, $1,800,000 from the State of Ohio from a grant fund to improve that area. So this ordinance this evening has to do with the design and engineering components of that. In order to get to this point, this Buckley Group report that you have on your drive gives you all the things that our engineering department here, Public Works and Engineering Department, looked at before they even put forward this information for the grant. So that helped, in my opinion, ODOT and the people that reviewed that, to award the City of Athens this grant. I personally am in total agreement that we need to move forward with this engineering phase. So that's where we are this evening. I'm not sure if there's going to be any other discussion. Member McGee.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the audience knew what we were talking about, especially because we have so many young journalists here, and they should be aware of that what we're talking about is, although we won't call it a tunnel underneath the street, according to the mayor, we won't call it a tunnel. It's basically a tunnel under the street, and it's going to cost about $3 million, from what I understand, or $2.5 million, something to that point, but the city will only be paying about $300,000, is that right?
$350,000 to $400,000.
So the city will be paying $400,000 to put a tunnel, a non-tunnel, under the street of Richland Avenue for that area of Richland Avenue that gets congested, you know, a few times during the day each day. And I've asked several times for council just whether there would be some alternatives to this expenditure, such as traffic guards, less costly expenditures. I just wanted to, again, the home viewers and the young journalists to be aware of what is going on. When we labeled this a pedestrian improvement ordinance, I think that's a little bit, that's one way of looking at it. So thank you.
Yes. Yeah. Councilmembers. Member Butler? Member Reisner?
That's me.
I'll comment as well. Thank you.
Okay. You want to go first, or?
No, I have to.
Well, I just want to say I've read the report. I'm 100% in favor of this. That area is more than a little congested a few times a day. I mean, it's just a mess. And, you know, I drive through there, and I wonder if someone's going to walk in front of me, or are they going to get between me and another car, and will I accidentally lose my footing on the brake and crush their knees? You know, just all kinds of scenarios get to my head. It's a dangerous place, and it really needs fixed. And of all the solutions, I see this is probably the most cost-effective. We could get a couple of new policemen on the force, and then pay them eight hours a day, two shifts, 16 hours, seven days a week. That would come up to about $300,000 a year, per year, for the rest of our lives. It seems to me we're best better off just paying $300,000, $400,000 once than keeping it every year. So it turns the costs into that, and the report is very complete, and I like the design. I think it'll work. I think it will be an enhancement. I think it'll make it safer, and that's really what we need to do. That's our job here on council, is look at public safety. This is one of the things we have to look at. And, yeah, there will be some costs, but on the other hand, running over students, that's costly too. And I'd hate to have that on my conscience, and I hate to be sued for it too, so I'd rather have a solution now, take care of it, so.
Member Butler?
Thank you. I'm excited about this endeavor. I've been on council roughly 2008, 2009-ish, and have been a member of a number of street tours, in which our Public Works Director, Andy Stone, has extensively addressed the concerns and needs of the city each year, the enhancements that we make to our streets and pedestrian thoroughfares, and this has been on his radar for a long time. This is a concern for many of us in the community. I believe this is the most simple, direct solution, and I trust our Public Works Director and his judgment. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, thank you. We have had, there has been some citizens' comments on seeing this preliminary report come out, and administration reminded me today that this is a preliminary report. It says so. It's the very first word in the document. Looking at the project, I know that whatever we put there, we're not going to bat 1,000. Everybody is not going to just go through this tunnel, so you also have to think about above ground and what we can do to still reduce and mitigate any type of interaction, because you're always going to have interaction between the different user groups, between the vehicles, the cyclists, the pedestrians, and anything else that might be using the street at that moment. So of course, I'm in favor of this project, but I am also excited to see, as it develops, what actually boils to the surface and how that final project looks further down the pipe. Thank you.
Any other comment? So again, and Mayor will come to you in a sec. Again, this is for design and engineering, so some of these concerns and aspects that other members of council have come, will come to the design firm as well and be discussed. Mayor Patterson.
I just want to follow up. And the Councilmember Kotsas had asked to kind of have an onsite conversation, which City Engineer and I are willing to do down there and look at things. I do want to, this is likely in the report, but I just need to reiterate it for those who haven't seen the report, that this particular area, we have pedestrian counts of roughly 1,300 an hour on this particular area. We also have about 7,000 vehicles per day, which includes delivery trucks, it includes our transit system that buses are running through there, and this is a calculation. That count was done across the entire day. We're looking at 750 to 1,000 vehicles per hour in this particular area running through For anyone who knows where the 682 roundabout tunnel is currently, that tunnel is 12 feet wide. One of the things we can do, and likely will do with this particular, okay, I'll call it a tunnel. The tunnel is not a tunnel, is we're looking to make this tunnel, you know, 20 to 25 feet wide. We can actually make this, with not a whole lot of increase in cost, 30 feet wide. That's, you know, if you think about it, that's almost three times the size and the width of the current tunnel, which gives us options for what we can do. I also want to throw this out, because I also have heard from the same individuals likely that Member Kotsas has, and a lot of it has been about bikeability through there. Ohio University's master plan in that particular area looks to connect the old Oxbow River Bed rail trail, you know, and create something that goes through which would have nice separation. You're never going to separate pedestrians from crossing over what is West Green to Baker Center, Porter Hall, Grover Center, Bird Arena, you know, going on on the Nattataurium. It's congested in there, and I've said this to council before, and I'm going to say it again, from my office, when my office was 247 Porter Hall, I was in that office on the two occasions where there was vehicle pedestrian conflicts, one serious, where the individual had to be lifelighted. That individual's career was, before the incident, was stellar on track to become a clinical psychologist, and because of that particular incident, that was literally taken away. So I have to say, to correct the problems that occur in this area, the safety issues in that area, how do you put a price tag on someone's life, let alone someone's career being, you know, seriously altered based upon, you know, conflicts that can happen down in that area? They can. Will they happen again? I hope to God not, but could they? They could. It's happened twice before, and I'm going to leave it at that, because this is a project where its intent, under the Ohio Department of Transportation's Transportation Alternatives Program, was to correct the safety issue that we see down there. So therefore, I hope council supports this in going through, and this is the right thing to do, to make a correction. I agree with Member Kotsas, and I think Member Butler, you know, is every project 100% right and fit 100%? Likely no. There's always things, but you know what? You do the best thing you possibly can in moving forward, and this is one of those.
Okay. All right. And I might also add that you may have mentioned this, but in addition to the vehicles, there are also over 1,000 pedestrians per hour.
1,300.
1,300 per hour. And what we're talking about structurally in terms of a tunnel, as you said, similar to the roundabout one that passes under, where you're talking about three feet below the existing crosswalk, so you're not talking something that's going deep into the ground.
No.
No. It's a slight, slightly below.
There'll be light, you know, natural light that will be easily passing through, plus will light this tunnel on the inside. A good example to give you for anyone who's been up to the now famous, or forever famous Columbus Zoo, the Columbus Zoo has one of these, it's very similar. It's a big, throat-wide-open pedestrian breezeway, causeway, whatever you want to call it. Just don't call it a tunnel.
Underpass.
An underpass.
Okay. All right. Thank you for all the comments. We'll move on now to ordinance 10817, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III, Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.07, Administrative Departments, Boards, and Commissions to add Section 3.07.76 to establish the Athens City Affordable Housing Commission. And that's introduced by Councilmember Foll.
Thank you. I move that we table this for right now.
Second.
So there's been some questions and communication problems with Debbie, so there were things that weren't supposed to be included and such, so we didn't get a chance to final draft it, and so I will bring it to City Council, our committee meeting next Monday, so that's all clear.
So we have a motion and a second for tabling this, and so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. This ordinance has been tabled, and what I'm hearing is until the next regular session, two weeks out. 10917 is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce 2017 year-end appropriations, and this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. We do this type of thing every year. It's one of the things we have to do to clean up our books as we get towards the end of our fiscal year, which is the same as our calendar year. Allow me to read the ordinance. Section 1, the auditor is hereby authorized to reduce the 2017 appropriations where anticipated receipts are not adequate, and when combined with the carry-forward balance, not sufficient to approve the full appropriations of funds. Section 2, this ordinance shall come into full force in effect as early as possible, as law permits. So again, we do this every year.
Okay. Thank you. Ordinance 11017 is an ordinance amending the 2017 appropriation ordinance, and introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Allow me to read Section 1. Section 1. 2017 appropriation ordinance, 15016, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriate balance the following sums. $30,000 to General Fund Police, 101207 TC 300, to cover polygraphs and officer training. $28,282.15 to General Fund Fire, 101208 TC 500, for a diesel exhaust system, and $30,000 to Sewer Plant Fund, 750637 TC 300, for slides removal and increase in the appropriations by said amount.
Okay. Thank you. Ordinance 11117 is an ordinance closing Park Place, West Mulberry Street, and a portion of Court Street on Tuesday, September 26, 2017, with a rain date set for Wednesday, September 27, 2017, from 3:00 to 9:00 PM, for a barbecue sponsored by the Joint Police Advisory Council, known as J-PAC, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Smedley.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for this item, please.
Second.
The reason being, we would need this ordinance in effect by the time of the event, and, which is, as you mentioned, September 26th.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspension of the rules for 11117. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Smedley.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt this ordinance, 11117, please.
Second.
Thank you. So as the ordinance reads, this is a great event, barbecue sponsored by J-PAC. It's a great opportunity for the community and university to interact in a positive way with both police forces. It's going to be free barbecue, so we welcome everyone to come out. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval. Yes, any comments or questions?
Do we have any idea of the size of the crowd that's going, that we're anticipating for this?
In the past, it's been roughly 1,000 who've come out, and we're planning between 700 and 1,000 to come again.
Wonderful.
Go ahead, yes.
You know, I would like to say, because I've been tracking the email traffic back and forth between Ohio University Police Department, City's Police Department, but also Member Smedley, and I have to commend Councilmember Smedley for all the heavy lifting that you've done to working this, to make this ineffective, as I believe it will be, J-PAC once again this year. So I just want to recognize you for all your efforts that you've put into making this work.
Thanks.
Good. We have a motion and second for approval of 11117. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11217 is an ordinance declaring certain items no longer needed for a municipal purpose. This is introduced by Councilmember Smedley.
Thank you, President Nisley. This is for three different items. Two are vehicles that have been deemed unusable for municipal purposes, and also for some receptacles that were uptown that have since been replaced by the Big Belly devices. And if I recall, some were recycled and going to be used as planters, and then these are the remaining that we found no need for. Administration want to say anything else about that? Is it pretty much it?
That's pretty much it, other than, as you guys can see, everyone on council can see, the mileage on these Crown Vics is significant, so it's time for them to go to the boneyard or somewhere, wherever they end up going.
Okay. Thank you. Ordinance 11317 is an ordinance authorizing construction and construction engineering of the water treatment plant facilities improvements. This is project number 307, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. I would like to ask permission to suspend the rules.
Second.
For deadlines and safety, as well as declaring emergency.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to move forward with making a motion to adopt ordinance 113-17.
Second.
Thank you. Essentially, this particular ordinance is an effort to continue to upgrade our aging infrastructure, specifically our water treatment plant facility. The city would look to receive a 20-year loan from the Ohio EPA Water Supply Revolving Loan Account, and when necessary, enact some water rate increases to also assure that the revenues are available to finance the project. Again, this authorizes the City Service Safety Director to enter into construction and construction engineering contracts. We're looking at $5,064,460. We're looking at $5,064,460 effort here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have now a one-reading resolution. Oh, excuse me. We've got the motion and second, and now we do need the vote. Excuse me. Any other questions or comments before we do the vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and that ordinance has been approved. And now we can move on to the one-reading resolution. This is Resolution 717, a resolution supporting the tentative award of a contract for construction of a water treatment plant, Project 307, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt this one-reading resolution.
Second.
Thank you. And essentially, this is acknowledging and working with the previous ordinance, the Kirk Brothers were the low bidder for this particular project. The loan is expected to be awarded to the city on October 26, 2017. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of this resolution, 717. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and this resolution is approved.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to announcements and other business. We do have actually three motions that we'll be needing tonight. The first one is regarding amending the rules of council. And we discovered, our law director discovered for us, I think, that, and our clerk of council, that we had been practicing for some years that the president pro temp votes when they are presiding as the president pro temp. And our rules state that they do not vote. And so what we are doing tonight is introducing language that corrects that in our rules of council. So I would entertain a motion to accept this revision to the rules of council. So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We now have a motion to accept the auditor's August 2017 financial reports. So moved.
Second.
Okay. And council has received these and had a chance to review them. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. The auditor's reports have been accepted. And we have a motion that I believe Councilmember Kotsas will make, and this is regarding an appointment to the Recreation Advisory.
Yes, yes. We have, we have an empty spot from a, from a citizen who actually moved out of town. So we've had an empty position on the, on the board here over the summer. And tonight, I was given the resume of Brandon Thompson to fill that term, which expires at the end of October, but then we would also then be renewing for another two-year stint. So Brandon has, brings a lot of experience being an Athens native, and we see him here quite a bit with the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee. So I'm excited to see him fill these shoes and donate his time to the Rec Advisory Board.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
Okay. So a motion and a second for approval of Brandon Thompson as to be appointed to the Recreation Advisory Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. And thanks to Mr. Thompson. And are there any other announcements? We will be having committee meetings next week.
Finance and personnel.
Finance and personnel.
Planning.
City Service Safety, likely.
Yeah.
Don't know yet about transportation.
Okay. But it's, just let us know by Wednesday. And once again, if there are any agenda items that need to be added to those committees by the administration, if you could let us know by Wednesday, that'd be helpful.
Okay, we do have transportation, an exciting item.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Trick or treat.
Okay. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that have not been covered on the agenda. So if there's any new item that somebody would like to speak to, anyone can do that. They have three minutes. They just need to come up to the podium and announce who they are and speak. Not anyone tonight, but thank you all for being here. Entertain a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for adjourned in our meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We stand adjourned at 7:36 p.m. Thank you.
It's more like me.